Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this afternoon's meeting of the Governance Committee. Thank you for attending. This meeting is open to the public. It will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live may record and rebroadcast this meeting. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and via the Modern Gov app. Paper copies of the agenda and the reviewing Policy Committee remit report and the updated work plan are all available. Has everybody got all their papers they need? Yep. Can I please request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? And just to make clear, there is no fire test planned for today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is, I don't think it is Tudor Square actually, is it? Because I think we've got a temporary different one. I think it's on the other side, so. We'll do introductions. My name is Fran Belbin and I'm Chair of the committee. I'll ask members to introduce themselves, thanks.
Councilor Mary Lee, Donald Ward.
Good afternoon, colleagues. councillor Eldred from Manor Castle.
councillor Rob Bannister from Grace Park.
Good afternoon, everyone. councillor Julie Grokup from Stockbridge in Upadon Ward.
Paul Turpin, Green councillor, Caledonian Valley.
councillor Mike Weaver, West End, Southfield Ward.
councillor Tim Huggan, Crookston, Crossfield Ward.
councillor Sue Alston from Fulwood Ward.
Thank you, and I'll just ask the officers at the front to introduce themselves and other officers to introduce themselves when we get to their items, so Jay.
Jay Bell, Democratic Services Officer.
David Hollis, General Counsel.
Thank you. I think I'm right in saying we have no apologies for absence. I think everybody is here and there are no items to exclude the press and public. Can I ask, as we get to item four, whether any members wish to declare an interest in any items of business? I'm assuming not, no. Item five is the minutes of the previous meeting. Are members happy to approve these as a correct record? Seeing nods there, thank you. Item six is public petitions, questions and statements. We did receive two statements for this meeting. They arrived on Monday morning, which strictly speaking is past the deadline for this meeting, but I think given one of the papers was published late, and I do think it's a little bit confusing and something we probably need to look at as well about what two clear days means in the way it's described on our public question scheme. I don't think it's always very clear what that deadline means, so we might need to do a little bit of work on that when we come to reviewing the public question scheme and statement scheme. So I'm happy to accept those for this meeting. Ruth is unable to attend today, the statements are both from Ruth Hubbard, but they will be added to the minutes of the meeting and therefore put onto the public record. Paul.
Thanks Chair. Could I ask that the statement is read out, please, because it does relate to the major item on the agenda?
You can ask, I don't have it in front of me, I will have to find it, which will take a minute, a second. So the one on reviewing Policy Committee remits says, unfortunately, it is impossible to make any meaningful contribution at this late stage on such a significant piece of work and in 200 words, so this statement should not be taken as any sort of citizen or stakeholder endorsement or legitimisation of the work or report. I simply note once again the failure of this committee to enable and ensure any meaningful citizen or community engagement or influence in shaping the design and ongoing review of the committee system, despite the fact that governance change was secured wholly by citizen and community mobilisation. Inevitably then, we're looking at an insular review and report pretty much wholly tied up with the council's own interests and priorities. I have separately requested a short chat with the Chair to feedback a couple of the big gaps and issues that I see, and I can confirm that I've had that conversation with Ruth yesterday afternoon. Did you want the other statement reading out as well? That really relates to the minutes of the other meeting, so, but again, we'll make sure those are on the public record when it comes to this meeting. Okay, so we're moving on to item seven on reviewing our Policy Committee remits, which is probably the most substantive item on this agenda. And I know we did have some discussion about this yesterday in the pre-meeting, so I'll just explain how I want to go about the presentation of this item, not least because I know Jason, who is presenting, has got a very sore throat and we want to try and save his voice as much as possible. So what I will do to begin with is just remind people of the scope of the remits review and what we agreed that we would discuss as part of this piece of work. Jason will then go on to tell us the story effectively of the working group and what we agreed through the working group. We'll take some general contributions at that point about the process and any general contributions, but then I propose we will go through each proposal one by one in order to get members' comments on each of the proposals, to take amendments as needed and take contributions from members and officers on those proposals. We might group some of them where they clearly group together. And if necessary, we'll take an adjournment after that bit as well if there are any amendments that we need to consider as groups. So I hope that's a good way to get through the awful lot of work that has gone into the remits review. And so we've got quite a long document to consider here, so I hope that's a helpful way that will make it clear how we're approaching this. So I will just remind members to begin with then of the scope that we agreed at the beginning, for the work at the beginning of the working group. And that was about looking at aligning committee remits to our strategic ambitions. So what should the policy commitment alignment and arrangements be to best deliver our council plan and our strategic outcomes and to provide leadership in the complex cross-cutting policy areas, considering the ambition and vision for our committee model? We will also, we were also looking at delivering policy committee responsibilities effectively, getting the balance between policy development decisions and review rights, including what we might previously have called scrutiny of decisions, the relative workloads of committees, decisions being made at the right level in the right place, and the balance in policy committee and local area committee relationships. And the third area of work was around improving, clarifying and simplifying policy responsibilities, identifying and resolving specific issues and anomalies, the clarity of roles of specific committees, any gaps, any issues that fall between multiple policy committees, constitutional issues and procedure rules. So it was quite a broad scope that we agreed for this work to really reflect on where we are with the committee system and whether the system as is, is performing the function that we set it up to do or hoped to set it up to do. So I'll pass over to Jason at this point to take us through how the working group went. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. My name is Jason Deitch, good afternoon, I'm head of Democratic Services at the council. So just to take you through some of the backgrounds, building on what the Chair has said. Governance Committee formed a working group to review the remits of our policy committees and we had a series of workshops which developed that approach to take a strategic view of the committee system and reflecting on our best to ensure our governance is shaped to deliver the council plan. And as the Chair has referred to, there were three areas of focus for reviewing the remits, so I won't go through those now. In summer and spring last year, we started the discovery phase of our work and involved members and officers in a series of interviews and events. And the key messages from that work are outlined in the report, both in the table as a summary and there's a slide pack at the back which gave a bit more detail in there around that. Just the headlines really, they related to purpose. So do we have a shared and agreed sense of what our committee system is for and its purpose in the context within which we're now working and what do we want it to achieve? Secondly, improving the way we work. So you'll see a lot of the proposals in the paper are about improving the way we work, varying from small scale things to larger scale things. So the discovery work really identified a lot of good practice, some of which is shared, but it's a little hit and miss, as we really wanted to make sure that that's shared and embedded across committees to improve how our system works. The third element came out in relation to capacity and resource. So I think in listening to members and officers, we realised that actually the committee system is quite a big ask in terms of members' time and commitments and in terms of the organisation, in the time just to actually support the system as well. So how do we maximise that time and deliver our commitments in the council plan for the city was a key sort of question for us, something that arose as a theme from the discovery work. Late last year and then February, March this year, the working group then met again to really look at proposals about how we might tackle some of these issues that were identified during this discovery phase in those three areas. So the first one was agreeing the purpose of the committee system and in the report, paragraph 252 sets out that purpose, which was really us revisiting why we have a system in place, what's the foundation for the work we're doing to make improvements to the committee system. Secondly, in relation to improving the way we work, there are some what we call quick wins or immediate actions that we can do. They might include improved consistency and standards, because one of the things that came up was, are we happy with the standard of reports or consistency in relation to members' interaction with the committee system? That would include work planning, the way committee papers look and feel, and the length of them and things on this committee paper is no different, it's relatively a long piece of work. How do we utilise knowledge briefings and other briefings and ensure there's consistency in relation to the way we run those? And then some test and trial approaches, so we can experiment a little bit to make sure that the committee system is looking back to the ambitions that we set when we set the system up in 2022. And that would be supported by clear enabling guidance and then tidying up particular issues to make things clearer. So that might include relatively small changes like the name of policy committees, but then some more detailed work really on responsibility of a particular work areas. So there are some proposals in relation to those. The third part of the report deals with options for addressing demand and capacity and pressures on the committee system. That includes something with delegations, different alternative delegations. So paragraph 2540 sets out that discussion and there are a number of options in there about how we deal with the pressure on workloads and how we deal with capacity in the system and how we actually focus best in the committee system. We looked at five options and the pros and cons of each, and members in the workshops considered some key questions and the comments the members made are included in the report. So that was really a look back at that session, just to remind members of what that was. The proposal at the end, so 2541, is for work to be done on alternative delegations, which we'll go through. There is more work to do, a lot more detailed work to do to implement both immediate proposals, guidance, learning and development, and we have started looking at some elements, so that's already in our planning for next year. But other changes to the constitution, decision making, including specific committee remits and delegations will require a lot more work. And we're looking to do those over the course of the year in consultation with committee officers and members and bringing that back probably for implementation next municipal year, so 2026/27. But it will be subject to a process from there. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Jason. So I think it's fair to say that during the course of this work, you know, we did reach several points at the working group where we did get into a bit of deadlock actually on the way forward on particular questions. So I think it's important to recognise what you were saying at the end there, Jason, that this is a bit of a staging post really, and that the proposals that are coming to this meeting, I feel I want that we at least had some consensus around them, I believe, and that's not to rule out people potentially bringing changes to some of those proposals, but that we had reached some level of political consensus around these. And that, yes, there is more work to be done, including perhaps some of the things that we were less in agreement about, that we will need to work out how we approach those. So I think that's the wider context for this piece of work. Do people, before we go into the specifics of the proposals, are there any general points or observations people want to make or questions people want to raise of Jason? Sue.
Thank you, yeah, and thank you for the report. I think we all found this report a little sort of confusing, and I think it's a bit disappointing that the work that the group has done, which has been undertaken, you know, as well as we could, actually hasn't addressed some of the fundamental issues that we did set out to address principally around the policy committees' individual responsibilities and dealing with that workload imbalance that we all know is there. So yes, we've looked at some useful things about trying to help the committees run more smoothly and hopefully we can sort of agree to move those forward today. But I feel there is still quite a lot of work to do and something that we're going to have to knuckle down at urgently in the new year.
Any other general comments before we come to specifics, Paul?
Thanks, yeah, I also find that the report is very long and really tinkers with the way the committees work and doesn't deal with the remits whatsoever. We did flag up thoughts and suggestions on how the committee remits could be changed without changing the number of them etc, by moving different responsibilities around. These have been rejected offhand in this report. I don't think that's an accurate reflection of what the group believes and that's really disappointing. There is a particular line in the report which I think is just a pure opinion that suggests, that says, moving policy thematic responsibility around the existing policy committees is unlikely to address the issues we are experiencing, as in capacity issues. I find that this is pure opinion presented as fact and I don't understand where it's come from or how it's got in there when, after flagging suggestions for moving responsibilities around, the discussion was never had. So the group has certainly not come to that position.
Thanks, we'll bring in David.
Yeah, I think, sorry, I think it's just worth remembering that the working group was that, was a working group and it was tasked with reporting back to this committee for this committee then to decide what it wants to do and endorse the working group's recommendations. So that's the purpose of this report. It wouldn't have been right to take a working group's recommendations and bring them back as a proposal until the parent committee of the working group has actually considered its working group's output and decided that that is the way it wanted to go. So that's what this report is, is to take that stage, to take the work of the working group and for the committee as a whole then to consider it. I would also say that I don't think anything has been rejected. I think what that comment reflects is the six-month review report as it sets out in paragraph 1.3, that Governance Committee will take a holistic approach to reviewing Governance Committee remits and that actually you can do things in isolation, but actually if you're then going to do another bit of work, you then need to take the impact of that into account. And what you need is an holistic approach to all the changes that you are intending to make and then work out what the impact of all of those is and does that then leave you with something that's better, no different or worse? And actually just making interim changes whilst they may do some things, don't do what was the remit, which is to take a holistic approach and that that's what the intention is that this committee will do, taking on the good work of the working group that is being reported to it.
Thank you, David. Paul.
Thanks, and you speak a lot of sense, David. However, you're not actually addressing the fact that there is a line in this paper which rejects what you've just suggested. We, as a working group, and I assume the rest of the committee, although to be honest, most of the committee are on the working group, we didn't get a chance to do that. So while I accept that we need to take a holistic approach when we look at the different responsibilities for the committee and there is an appetite amongst the committee to move things around, this paper states that it's, that is basically a waste of time.
I think, I think, no, I think what it's saying is, is just doing some of those whilst we're also proposing to do other things, isn't the right thing to do. We can argue over wording, but I think we're probably agreeing that actually if we're going to do an holistic review, we need to look at the entire impact on that. And that's what this report is reporting back to Governance Committee as a suggestion.
I'm going to propose, we've got other people wanting to come in, I don't want it to just turn into a kind of two-way conversation here, so if I bring in Mary.
Yeah, it's just really for clarification, just to repeat what you've said, I suppose, David, just clarified my mind. So we're taking a holistic view. You've said that the working group were there to discuss all the issues, to look at what recommendations they would put forward, but that would be then taken to this committee for a fuller discussion and before taking into, and not to be moving things around without having a more holistic view, like you've said, of the whole of the council on every policy committee and what it does. And that's what, so we've got that information from the working group and it's going to come to us for further discussion as we go forward. We can't just move one thing without looking at the effect, the impact it has on something on another policy committee.
Thank you. Did you want to come back?
Thank you, yeah. I think what Debbie's referring to is actually what we all hoped we were going to get to during the working group, that holistic look at all the committees and what they were doing and whether they were, had the right set of responsibilities within each one. I'm inclined to agree with Paul that I think this sentence is making an assumption and it needs adding on the end, you know, unlikely to address these issues we're experiencing on its own or on their own. But I do think that the fundamental problem is, I think we all hoped we were going to get a lot further into the detail of looking at what the committees were actually individually responsible for. Yes, looking at it across the piece, and that was the work that we really felt we wanted to get on with and we haven't got there. And therefore that's something that needs to be addressed early in the new year.
Thank you. And to add to that, there are 20 options in this paper, and the 20th actually has five options, 20 proposals, so with item 20 having five options, that's actually 24 proposals, and none of them suggest we look at the responsibilities within the remits of the policy committees, that they are just not mentioned in there apart from in this sentence dismissing them.
Thank you. I suppose I'd reflect, I think we did have a conversation where we talked about a really thorough review that potentially looked at changing committees and what have you, and the feedback we got at that stage was, we don't want to go that far, to be quite honest. And so it feels a little bit that, I'm not entirely clear how far, we did discuss as part of the working group, a real, you know, starting from scratch if we were starting again, and that was one of the questions in the discovery work, I think, what, you know, would we arrange it the same way? And certainly the feeling I got from suggestions that were put to the group was not going through everything that each committee does, it was very much around moving perhaps one thing to another committee, and I think that's where it was problematic without doing it in that holistic way that David described. But I think taking on board all those points, I think we will have to come back to this as we get into the next phase of this work, which will be in the new municipal year. It's clear there's still issues to discuss around that. So I think we will have to take the proposals that we have, which, as I say, I do think were ones that there was broad consensus around, though, you know, there may be bits and pieces as we go through them that people want to pick out, but recognise that we need to come back to some of this work in the new municipal year and look at it in some detail. But I think we'll probably have to find a different approach to it, to the one that we've tried taking this year, because we didn't get to a place where, to my mind at least, we were taking that holistic approach around it, but very open to further discussion on how we can do that next year.
Thanks. I'm sorry, Fran, but I have to correct the record on that because we did not have that discussion. There were several members putting suggestions and thoughts on how responsibilities and parts of the remit could be in different places, different committees. Those suggestions were put onto a PowerPoint document, they were never discussed, we never got past that, that was as far as that went. There was zero discussion on moving things around. I don't know, perhaps you're getting confused with a discussion within your own group, we never discussed that as a working group or as a committee.
I think there was discussion around it and I've certainly got, you know, let's not get into the detail of it here, but I know I have feedback from Sue, for example, that we were perhaps trying to do too much with the review at that stage, so perhaps we've got slightly crossed wires around this. But as I say, I do think we probably need to think about how we can get into that piece of work next year with that holistic approach that we've discussed. Did you want to come in again?
Just very briefly, I think early on, we did say, do we want to tear it all up and start again? And I think the view was, no, we didn't want to tear it up and start again. But with respect, I think that's quite different from, you know, getting the committees, spreading them all out on a table and thinking, right, this one's oversubscribed, doing too much, is it doing the right things? This one's slightly undersubscribed, is there something we could move to that? You know, that is a piece of work we could have done that we didn't do.
Julie. At the risk of trying to move us on, I just think this is really important and I think the depth of this discussion that we've had so far just highlights that that is absolutely the case. And I think if we think back to the absolute very beginning when we were looking to set the committee system up, the only way that we could look to do it and make any sense out of it was we aligned it to the executive rules within the council at that time to try and get some strategic direction and make things as simplified as we possibly could. And of course, we all know the council has moved on considerably since then, and if you look at the proposals, number one, strategic setting aligned to the council's overall policy framework in line with city goals and the council plan. So I think we've already said that that is actually what we're trying to do if we're all agreeable with that. So it's how we make all of the things that we all know, wherever we believe we are with them, how we make those fit into that, I think is the piece of work and how we should be driving that in the new year, so that we can make sure that things are properly aligned, that they fit, so we don't have all this mismatch and messing about. And I think, once we've done that, we might be in a better position to look and see the impact of that on members, because just doing that doesn't actually mean that there may not be an impact on members and officers in terms of how the work, you know, the workloads pan out, which I think is where we're all trying to get to. So I think we've got something there and I think there may just be something that we need to add into that first definition of what we're about to try and just tease that out and give us some direction as how we move forward.
Thank you, Julie, and I think, and again, that speaks to some of the points in Ruth's statement as well, that's really important, we keep this work focused on how we're achieving the best outcomes for the city and for our citizens and it's not just about political expediency etc. Elle.
Thanks, and was also going to make a kind of slightly broader comment, perhaps similar along the lines as Julie, I'm just looking back at the scape that we set ourselves for this working group, and it is quite broad, there's three quite kind of large areas of work that we're trying to address, and I think we've made progress on some areas of it and progress on other areas of it has been more difficult, perhaps as this conversation demonstrates, there were issues of disagreement that it's not been possible to move forwards on. But it does feel like this paper has captured some of where we've got to in terms of the things that are agreed.
things that are agreeable, and that's helpful at the end of this municipal year to be able to say, okay, well, let's move forward on some of it. Quite a lot of it's actually about what needs to happen at an officer level and kind of good practice and putting things in place that we can then have for the next municipal year, which I think is great that we're able to kind of take stock and agree those things at this point. And that, I think, in effect, the relative workloads of committees is one sub clause of one of three goals, so we shouldn't hold ourselves kind of to too high a standard that we haven't got there yet, but I do agree that it's something that we could look at in the future. But I think the point of this is that we're saying, how does this system best serve the city and its residents and us as representatives of our residents in our ability to make effective decisions? I would want for us to be thinking about the links between different policy areas as well as workloads, there's lots that's about, you know, does it make sense for the people on this committee to have the same set of skills, the same set of, like, policy interests, to be talking to the same external stakeholders, to be talking to the same internal officer leads, there's all kinds of things that we would want to have on the table in addition to just, does this pile of papers look slightly larger than this pile of papers? We can be more strategic about it than that, but I do think that that's something we can think about in the future. I'll save any more comments on the detail of it till we get into the discussion.
Okay, I'll take Laurie.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Laurie Brennan, I'm the head of Policy and Partnerships in Strategy and Communications, as it is now. I just wanted to say firstly, thank you for all the members, for the comments you made today, but also I think the spirit in which the working group was conducted over those months as well. Members gave their time alongside officers to do work with individual policy committees, to do interviews with chairs, and so we've got a good perspective in terms of the discovery phase on what people feel in the system. And I think probably the report reflects the, some of the complexity, I think Paul's point is a bit complicated or some of it, but also the passion and depth to which we're looking into this to try and get it right. I think, we know this is not a straightforward piece. We, if you look in the appendix three, just as a point of detail, Paul, your comments about the things that were put forward are all listed in there, so they're published as part of the agenda pack. And I think where we got to in the working group, I think that probably, councillor Dodd's recent comment, that's probably just reflected probably in my perspective and looking at it a little bit. I think, looking at the committee system, it's a complex piece. Councillor Grokaw's comments were right, when we set up the system, it was about functional allocation as well. But where the paper takes us to, and I think it's a deliberate storytelling in the paper to get to those options, where it sets out that there are choices you can make about whether one piece of policy fits in one committee or another. There's a horizontal challenge about where things fit, there's also a vertical challenge about the depth to which you go into those issues at policy committee, and those options reflect the choices you might have in there. And that's where we've probably got to, where we need to progress in the coming year and we can pick that up as the work planning item. So as I said, it's sort of moving things from one committee to another may solve some capacity demands on a particular committee, but it won't necessarily bring coherence to the system. But also where members have fed back through the discovery phase that you want to do more of the quality, the sort of the scrutiny work, small s, the policy development and absolutely taking Ruth Hobbs' comments, citizens involvement through the committees themselves. The space to create that is the question around, what do you free up? And that doesn't necessarily mean moving one thing to another, it means thinking about the extent to which you take decisions and work at a committee, at the committee level. And that's, that's a choice we all have, I guess, and that's where I think the paper gets us to without progressing beyond that. So I think we shouldn't, I'd be quite cautious to not undermine the work that's gone in because I think you've all put some fantastic time in, I think officers have as well. I think this gets us to quite a good place for work in the coming year, because it's important that we do this together with members. And so I think we've got a set way of working, which has been really productive. And there is more to do though. Thanks.
Thank you, Laurie, and absolutely echo my thanks for everyone who's participated in the working groups, there have been some really good discussions, I think, in those groups that have, and I think very much what you were talking about there, it's not just about the amount of items that come to committee, it's about the amount of time that we spend on items and planning the time that we need to ensure that we are spending sufficient time and thinking about all the different ways we perhaps need to interrogate some of the different items that come to committee, that has been very much the subject of the working group as well. I've not got any more hands-ups, so I'm proposing that we start to go through the proposals, if that's okay with everybody. So the first, and these are on page 25 of the agenda pack, the first one is around the purpose of the committee system. I will not read all these proposals out in detail, but I think it probably is worth spending a bit of time on this one, because this does describe the overall purpose. And again, I think we discussed this at some length, that the, we agreed the purpose would be around strategic direction setting aligned to the council's overall policy framework in line with city goals and council plan, decision-making in support of this strategy, performance monitoring, review, learning and adaptation and holding to account, public involvement in democracy, including through petitions and public questions, connections to Lex, and to provide assurance that public involvement has taken place in the development of a decision, and to make decisions for the city and for citizens in an open and transparent way. So I think, again, we did discuss this one at some length, I don't know if people are happy with that, or do people, will take an actual vote as part of the recommendations at the end of it, but if people want to make any specific amendments or anything throughout, then I think bring them in now. Julie?
I'd like to propose an amendment that just adds something about the how, because I think for members of the public, I think it would be important for them to understand a little bit of how we are going to do this, and selfishly from a perspective of members. So I'd like us to include something around saying that it's to allow councillors who are in a privileged position to speak to senior council officers on behalf of those who they represent, which allows members to challenge on behalf of their electorate, both in public meetings and in informal settings, because I think we're talking about, a lot about what we're doing, but we're not talking about how we're doing it, and I think that would just provide it with some clarity.
So I think you've got some specific wording written down there, Julie, that I think we've more or less captured, I'm looking at David, just not to take notes, but again, just checking that everything's within the
Can you say those words? Sorry, can you say those words again?
Sorry. To allow councillors who are in a privileged position to speak to senior council officers on behalf of those who they represent, which will allow members to challenge on behalf of their electorate in both public meetings and informal settings.
Okay, so as I say, my intention is we'll go through all the proposals and then if necessary, we'll take a short adjournment so that groups can think about these amendments, so you've got a little bit of time just to think about those. Any more comments on number one, the purpose of the committee system? Elle?
Thanks, I think it's really helpful to see this laid out, and I think it really nicely builds on the design principles that were agreed as part of the original formation of the committee system predates me, but I think it's quite helpful for us to kind of have this clarity in mind. I'm open to what Julie's suggesting, I suppose for me that comes under the, and holding to account bit of point three, where that's holding officers and fellow politicians to account. I think the idea of a sort of, what does this mean? We might want to go broader than just that one how, so maybe that's something that we ask as part of the future work to think about, or if these are our purposes, then what are our ways of being, ways of behaving, ways of being together? Maybe there's a kind of way that we could think about that in the future, but I think that the sort of five areas that we've identified feel like they're quite helpful and hopefully that will give some direction to the rest of the committees to kind of challenge themselves, are they doing those things? Are we being effective at all of those aspects in the way that we're organising ourselves as a committee? So, thanks.
Paul?
Thanks, just briefly, yeah, I'm happy to support that suggestion, Julie. I think, I think this, the area that you raise is going to come up on most of the proposals because they're all very, very vague, review, consider, you know, there's very little in hard material in any of the proposals. So thanks for offering up that clarification, and I'm sure we'll have more as we meet, and we might even need an extension.
Okay, any more comments on that one? Okay, so the second proposal is around improving the way we work and work planning, and this proposal is that all policy committees arrange a work programme, work planning session at the start of the municipal year with the purpose of overview, getting an overview of the issues and priorities that will come to the committee in the year ahead, to consider things like public engagement and be able to plan ahead, things like member development, knowledge briefing requirements, and also look into whether there are connections with other strategic issues, particularly that might be taking place across other committees. So I'll take any comments on that one. Rob?
I do feel that some of the best work I've been involved with has been with the public, some of the meetings out in the, either in town hall or out in the community, and I do feel we should have more of that, because it's actual proper engagement, rather than expecting them to write emails or complain afterwards.
Thank you, and I think that was part of the purpose behind this, is that there hasn't always been time, no matter how busy the committee schedule is, to plan in that kind of public engagement that we might have wanted to see around some issues. I'm not seeing any more comments around that one, so I will move on to the next ones, if that's okay. Sorry, Laurie?
Thank you, Chair. All I was going to say, I think this seems like a simple proposal, it was deliberately put in, thanks to members, to say, how do we norm some of that best practice in some other committees operating some don'ts, it's not consistent. It's really important in terms of strategic business planning as well, because it gives members a dedicated time to think about the priorities for that year, probably alongside the directors, with the service plans they bring forward as well, but also to design in the time for things like citizen involvement, to think about what piece of work you might want to do, where you might want to undertake review and scrutiny and performance challenge. So it's trying to take that purpose statement that you've just discussed and start implementing in how the work plan's formed over the year. I think it's really important that, it's good that, if we can move that forward, that would be great, because I think it's a good, good step forward anyway.
Thank you, and I'll probably just draw attention to the fact that this committee has already, I think, scheduled a work planning session, haven't we? So we are following our own good practice recommendations, and that may become relevant later on when we get to our work planning item as well. Okay, so the next proposals, I propose to take these next four together, they're all about committee papers and improving the way we work. So this is three, four, five and six, and that is around doing some development work with officers to introduce consistent standards of practice in report writing, one around ensuring that community and partner engagement and consultation are fully considered in the work planning process and committee work programmes, reviewing how accessible papers, committee papers and meetings are to citizens, and taking a more succinct approach when officers are presenting reports and briefings at committee meetings and with the relevant kind of support and learning and development to support those proposals. So I think they all come as a group, really. Paul?
I'm okay if you want to take them as a group, but I have comments on one of them, and I'm happy to support the others. I think the first one, proposal three, is basically just continue what's being done, which is fine. Proposal five, that we review the extent to which committee papers and committee meetings are made accessible to citizens, et cetera. I think that, that word review is rather ambiguous, and I would like some more clarification on the who, when and how does that review?
Chair, so do you want to comment on that particular question?
Thanks, Chair. So in this, I think this is a mixture of what's in the written word and how things are presented, but also how accessible is a meeting like this to people, so it was really looking at it in the round. I'd suggest that along with some of the other proposals in here, we make sure it's in the work programme for something to follow up, so officers would follow it up, bring back how we want to approach it to you, to check that back through yourselves, just so we're making sure that that's done properly. And we have had conversations with groups that use the town hall, social disability Sheffield and things, so I think we'd want to make sure that we're doing something that's actually going to make things easier for them as well in checking on that, so probably a range of things around readability and physical accessibility as well, is our website, you know, is that right, various things in there.
Thanks, Sue.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion really, that we've got quite a few of these proposals that say, review this or look at that, et cetera. I just wonder whether it might be useful just to think about how we do that for all of them, and maybe that we could add in somewhere that we will have a report back on how these have gone on and identify a date, I don't know, maybe by October, or, I'm just pulling dates out of thin air, somebody can recommend a better one, so that we know that we're going to look at them all again, because there's quite a lot of open-ended stuff here, and I think that would save a lot of time if we could agree that.
Thanks, I suggest if we do a little adjournment at the end of this bit, that we perhaps come up with a date that we'll come back with and do it that way. Mike?
Just a minor point in three, about the executive summary of key points in the report, summarising the content of the paper and with linkages through to the main body of the report with the relevant points.
Are you proposing that as an amendment, Mike? So a digestible executive summary of key points in the report, and can you just say the words again?
And linkage through to the relevant part of the paper.
Yeah, that's fine. Julie?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Mike, I think, I think that's helpful. Nobody's going to be shocked by the next words that are going to come out of my mouth. The reports need to be considerably shorter, they really, really do, and I think we do need to say that somewhere in this document, so that everybody's absolutely crystal clear, that, you know, we cannot go on expecting officers to write such lengthy reports, expecting members to read them, and expecting members of the public to understand what is going on in those reports. Because if I was a member of the public, taking my own committee, and I wanted to look at something in adult health and social care, and I opened the document to find that it was over 400 pages long, I wouldn't know where to start. So there is no way that that is accessible to the public when health and social care is such an important issue for so many of us all across the city. So I do think we need to say somewhere in there something about that. Proposal six, it is also suggested that committee chairs might introduce reports at committee meetings to provide context. There is absolutely no way I can agree to that, that is almost suggesting that the chair has predetermined what is happening if they are introducing a paper, so I think that that is very dangerous, I think that a paper should be presented by an officer, so that we have got clarity as members when it comes to the voting process in relation to those papers. And I also think, again, the number of officers that I see in very long policy committee meetings that are sat there for an hour and a half waiting to speak on a paper, and actually have got a 10-minute speaking row, when certainly all my policy committee meetings I come to, the executive director is present, I cannot see why, as someone who is the head of that portfolio, cannot present the papers, should be in a position to answer the questions, and we could just have one officer present at policy committee meetings, who is across the portfolio, who works strategically with other executive directors, so when we do have cross-cutting issues, they will be aware of those and will be best placed to deal with those issues as and when they arise in the policy committees. And I think that that will save us, officers, a lot of time and frustration, I think it frees them up to be doing other things. And as the executive directors are already there and quite often do chip in and make comments because they have a better understanding, I think it will make information flow a lot more easily, so I think that is something that we should be considering doing in future to make sure that we get the best information we can, as succinctly as we can, and that we can show that we're working together across committees. So I know that's rather weird, eh, but I'm sure we can come up with some sort of suggestion to narrow that down and help as we move along. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Can I suggest then, number five, on that second sentence that says this might include the ordering and format of reports, that we make it the length ordering and format of reports, which just catches your first point, and that's a quite a simple amendment. And then I think you're basically proposing to remove the last sentence from number six. I think I'd probably suggest it sounds a bit complicated to come up with an amendment based on the latter part, but just to remove based on the latter part, but just to remove that sentence that's about committee chairs for the time being and the rest of it we can look at, just in terms of making it an amendment simple to consider. Okay. Any other comments or thoughts around those or reflections on what people have proposed there? Rob?
I was going to suggest much the same, that the, each of these committee papers should have a single page review at the start, that should hit all the main points and like you're saying, have it hyperlinked through to the main text if there's something that you are interested in. We obviously get sent a lot of these and there's no realistic way that any one of us can get across all nine committees. So if we all have just a single page, at least we can hopefully avoid being siloed.
Thank you. I think that's probably captured already through the exact paper and the addition that Mike made, I think, so I won't propose any amendment there. Elle?
Thanks. I'm just reacting on the fly and conscious we're going to have an adjournment to think about this in, in more detail, but I think the point that councillor Turpin made about being clear that proposal five is about increasing accessibility to citizens. At the moment, we're just reviewing and that suggests it could go up or down. And I think we are all in agreement that we want it to go up and for it to be more accessible to citizens. So if we could make that clear in that proposal, I think that, that would be helpful. On proposal six, Julie, councillor Greco, you've been a councillor for a lot longer than me, but I kind of miss chairs not introducing agenda items. I, I feel like I would value the kind of political context, the where's this come from, why are we talking about this, why does it matter to the citizens of Sheffield, like as a, as a like, yeah, opening speech. I don't, I wouldn't want them to tell me the detail that the officers are then going to tell me about what's in the paper, but just as a sort of scene setter that's probably beyond the remit of an officer to give that kind of flavour to something that, that sort of sets like why are we having this conversation, why does it matter? I, I hear what you're saying, that you don't want them to sort of unbalance the conversation. But I do feel like, hopefully, they're involved in lots of conversations that, you know, not all, all committee members are a part of and it would be helpful for them to kind of give a bit of a steer and helpful for me as a committee member, but also helpful for any members of the public listening to have someone explaining what is hopefully quite plain English, kind of why, why we're having this conversation and why, why it matters. So for me, I would, I would value that, but colleagues may feel differently.
Okay, Paul?
Thanks. Yeah, I largely support proposals from Mike and from Elle in regards to saying, review to improve, support your proposal about not having the chair present it. I mean, and I would say actually that there's, that it should be presented by someone with greater expertise than the chair of a committee. Would disagree that we just have the executive directors presenting though, because again, I think the people who work on the, on the proposal, the report, whatever, whatever you want to call it, do have the most expertise and should be there to answer any of the questions. And I also think that it acknowledges the work of officers, especially as you go more junior than the directorship from people who've done it, it acknowledges their work and their expertise. And I think, and I think as far as I'm aware, I think officers like to come and present to us and, and feel that they're not just working in a, a room miles away somewhere. So I, I'd like that we, but otherwise I'd like to hear the suggestion, Julie.
Mary?
I suppose it, it, just referring to that, it means, what do you mean by present? And I think when, when we talk about the chair presenting, it's, it's about, this is, it's the before, this is what the problem is, this is what we're proposing to do about it, and this is the detail. And then the officer then will continue and explore into the, the bones and the depths of the report to present that to the policy committee members. So, you know, I, I get it's, what do you mean by presentation? And I think in just ordinary English, to explain to the public that then, the public outside, what this report is about in plain English. And then we can go into the, the depths of it. That's when, that is the officer's position, that's the officer's job, role to do that.
Okay, I've not got any more hands up on that particular set of proposals, so I'll propose, suggest we move on to the next bit if that's okay. So then we've got three proposals around knowledge briefings and pre-agenda and pre-meetings. So number seven is that we share best practice in relation to member briefings to make effective use of those meetings and ensure members are involved in discussion and have the knowledge and awareness they need. Number eight is to produce a written protocol for group policy officers attending briefing meetings, just to ensure that there is a common understanding around that, because I think that's a bit inconsistent at the moment. And number nine is a suggestion to record knowledge briefings with appropriate awareness and information governance so that members can watch knowledge briefings at a time convenient to them if they can't attend. And I think the suggestion there was to record the, the officer briefings, but not the discussions, I think, wasn't it, when we discuss that, which just makes some of that information management easier. So if we take those three next, Julie?
Number eight, wouldn't it be lovely if we had a fair and equitable system and that all councillors had access to a policy officer? This is yet another example of how we have a two-tier system of councillors in this council because not all of us do have access to those. And I think it's important that members of the public understand that. And I think further, if I were in a group that did have one, I would be concerned that policy officers were attending and were then making policy based on what they'd heard in a committee as opposed to what they'd heard from their group and how you were ensuring that what they were doing was actually group-focused as opposed to policy committee focused. Because if that's the way we're going, then perhaps we should have policy officers on the policy, on the policy committees so that all members could have access to them.
Okay. Do you have a specific amendment you want to make there or just making a general point?
I think there's, I think there's a serious issue here about equity for councillors. And I think that that's something that we should all be very much alive to, especially as the early idea of having set up the committee system was to make sure that everyone across the city was equally represented by their elected representatives, when this is an example of how it's not. So I'd like to say that, yes, we should have a proposal to say that if we are having policy officers, they should be across the piece and all members should have access to them. And I would hope that other members would support that, but we will see.
Have you got a specific form of words then that we'll put into this? Oh, sorry. David?
I think that's, well, this is a review, so it's not an actual proposal to, to bring that in. So I suppose, I was just trying to think, there, there's no financial implications here, but I am thinking that we're just looking at this as a, a review to consider those rather than it being a formal proposal.
Can I suggest that we take that forward as part of what we're looking at next year then, rather than there's a specific amendment here, if that's okay? Any other comments? Paul?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I fully support that, you know, there is a hierarchical system and when, when we're talking that everybody says, oh, we want our councillors to represent the public the, the best that they can. And then you do have that inequity and you do have the inequity of not all group leaders have paid for their extra responsibilities, not all people with enhanced positions such as spokespeople have paid for their positions, but yet expected to do the same work as other group leaders and spokespeople who are paid. And I would, I would support a broad equity across the council. So my questions on this is proposals, sorry, my notes were a bit messy here because I've got the numbering wrong earlier on, but proposal seven, that we share best practice in relation to member briefings, et cetera, with whom? Whom? From whom? To whom? That a written protocol is developed for group policy officers? By whom? And regarding recording briefings, two questions. How long will other recordings kept for? And I know that when we discussed this at the very beginning of the committee system, and, and I think our, our legal counsel, whoever that was at the time, suggested that those recordings would be open to freedom of information requests and actually to record them could hinder a frank and open debate. And we, we, we used the example at the time of, of saying, what if we discuss the council buying all former council homes back? You know, and that would really be a contentious issue for those people who lived in those former council homes, of course. And we, and we would like to have the freedom to be able to have frank discussions about things that would never happen, but we felt would be valuable to, you know, chew the fat over. So sorry if that's a big blob of questions.
Thanks, Paul. I think the last point there, I think we did discuss and I think that's why we came up with that formulation, that it would just be the briefing part rather than the discussion part that would be recorded for the benefit of members on the basis that, yes, you know, it's certainly okay for people to have conversations and discussions in private. Just, I'm looking at the offices, does anyone want to feedback on any of those other questions? David?
I think if we bring this in, we'll bring in a protocol and we'll have guidance around that so that it's there. So when, when you say, how long will they be retained? I suggest that you'd retain them until the, the usefulness of the knowledge briefing itself had gone. So if it's, if it's a briefing about a decision that's coming up, you would retain it until that decision, but had been taken and then you might want to delete it. But that's, that's part and parcel of this proposal, bringing it in. We then look at those practicalities. But I agree with councillor Alston that actually we need to know what's happening on these so that the progress against each of these should be reported back.
Thank you. So I'm just checking, Paul, is there a specific amendment you want to make on those or can we leave it at that we would take those forward, assuming they're agreed, with some additional detail provided, assuming we take the proposals forward? Yep. Okay. I'm not seeing any more hands around those. So proposal 10 is around test and trial approaches to produce online good practice guide for committees showcasing examples and case studies of approaches taken from across policy committees in Sheffield and other local authorities and that this would be an iterative process as new ideas and activities develop. Any comments around that one? Okay, we'll take that one, is okay. So on to two around clearer enabling guidance. So proposal 11 is that guidance and terminology should be reviewed and clarified in respect of task and finish and working groups. And I think that reflects some discussions that we have within group, that it wasn't clear what, what was the difference between a task and finish group or a working group or a reference group. And so having some more clarity around that. And proposal 12 was to produce some new simple guidance for members and officers to support this more creative approach to support the ambition around collaborative working. Paul?
Item 11, when and who will review the guidance and terminology in respect of task and finish and working groups?
I think that again comes back into that point, when we adjourn, we'll come up with a, a date that we want some report backs from officers around this. So we will agree a date between us, I hope, that we'll bring back before we take the final vote on this, if that's okay. Mike?
Just to clarify, and David will probably know better than me, I never thought that working groups was defined within the constitution for committee system. I thought it was just task and finish groups.
That's right. And I think it's probably useful having, having a distinction between them, if we are going to have a distinction or whether we decide we're just going to have one name. I, I mean, I don't want a solution out here. For me, a working group is something that might be ongoing and will look at things for a length of period of time. Task and finish is about taking one, one thing and having a defined thing that it's looking at and coming up with a solution. So, but those are a possible distinction, but that's for this to decide, for this committee to decide and make a recommendation then to full council, ultimately who will amend the constitution appropriately.
Thanks, David. Laurie, did you want to come in on that?
Thank you, Chair. These were hopefully relatively simple proposals. I mean, the idea was, if you're a member from the conversations, working groups, from members and the feedback we have from the discovery bits, that actually trying to create that sort of, that spirit of working together across the committees and not being set by them, but also not being constrained by, there was a perception that you shouldn't set these things up because it wasn't, because they were, you'd not risk like overburdening capacity and things like that. I think the thing we're trying to do is flip that to an enabling position, saying encouraging committees to work together, encouraging flexibility between policy-themed areas as well. So that's kind of what that was about really. I think in the spirit of the way the system works, I think it's quite a positive thing and we've seen some really good examples of that in the last year as well. I think the, the breathing and working group was a particularly good example of that.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, because some groups are set up annually and I can't remember when we set up a subgroup annually in terms of the need. So are we not surely going to look at subgroups, task and finish groups, working groups and come up with something that makes sense and against the constitution which will be used? Thank you.
Thanks. I've not heard any specific amendments around those, so again, just double checking before we move on, that we're not amending those. Okay. The next set were all around tidying up of smaller issues, so I propose we go through these one by one. So proposal 13 is with the council strategy framework, framework established, tier one strategies should be owned by S and R, a strategy and resources committee due to their cross-cutting nature, while the associated tier two strategies are led by the relevant policy committee. For example, the growth plan is approved by strategy and resources, the culture strategy and the skills and employment strategies are led by economic development and skills committee. Any comments on this? Paul?
Just a formality, I think we, we, we discussed in the pre-meeting that we could just add the word culture to the title.
That's the next one.
Oh, it's the next, I'm sorry. I thought you'd have got, I told you, it's a flipping complicated report, this.
Sorry, I think we're okay with 13 then. So 14 is the one that Paul was just talking about, that we said, economic development and skills committee should include a clear reference to culture in its title. I think, Sue, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm a bit unclear why this one and the similar one later on is phrased as it is. I'm looking at, David, I presume the actual change needs to be agreed by full council. So can I just suggest an amendment that's added to number 14 to say that this committee, as in the governance committee, recommends that that committee is renamed the Economic Development Skills and Culture Committee? And we just send that recommendation forward rather than having it reviewed again?
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Elle, sorry.
Thanks, Chair. Sue's point about let's, where we have reached some consensus about some of these things, let's make a clear proposal so that we can move forward on it. I assume that that specific wording is with, has been run by the chairs and folks within EDS and they are happy with that. And if, on that basis, then I think that would be a good idea.
David?
I think, I get why people are raising that point. I think the point of that one is, is it's coming now, the working group have suggested it's going now for the committee to approve it, the committee approve it, I'll just put it up at the AGM, so.
Thank you. Not seeing any more hands up around that one, so we will move on to 15, which is to consider how to better connect cross-cutting economic issues between the relevant committees. For example, issues relating to regeneration, such as through joint briefings. And further consideration might be given as to the most relevant committee to consider matters relating to regeneration and markets. Sue?
Yeah, I, I'm a bit confused as to why this has been picked out specifically, because to me, this, and I think the one below as well, basically go back to the work we need to do of where things sit and is everything in the right place or do we need to move things around and looking at it holistically. So I'm quite happy to review this as an individual thing, but I'm interested to why this one's been picked out.
Did you want to respond on that, Chair?
Thanks. So the ones that are mentioned here around, so number 15, which is about economic issues, it's about joining those up, but actually then looking at where they sit. And similarly, car parking, blue badges, was a similar issue. And then there's a lot of community buildings later on. So they were things that the working group dis-... So they were things that the working group did discuss, and particular things that came out of the discovery phase.
I think that's probably where we had some consensus that these things definitely need to be looked at, which we didn't have on all the issues that were raised by people in terms of moving things around, but I think with these ones, we did have some consensus that they at least needed looking at. Sue?
In which case, how, is there a suggestion, or should we make a suggestion today as to where that's moved? Because I could make a suggestion today, or is it that more work needs to be done before we make that suggestion?
I think my view would be that more work needs to be done, because I don't think we did work through it in that level of detail, but I'll bring David in.
Yeah, I think that, I think they're flagged as the ones that the working group highlighted, but I think the work to do that needs to be done as part of that overall remit review.
Laurie?
Thank you Chair, I think the reason this features in the sort of imperative tidying up session area is it's actually about the way of working and not the policy area specifics, and don't, probably don't get into the regen, it was useful example, which was cited by the members in the working group actually, because regen could involve transport, economic skills, it could involve planning, it could involve licensing, it was about how members across policy committees work together, recognising that no matter how we structure our policy themes, some of these things don't easily fit into boxes. So you could have a working group, for example, on the city centre, which will be about regeneration, but it would definitely involve transport, it would definitely involve skills, it would definitely involve business, it would definitely involve property. So it's about how we operate as a collective rather than thinking about the structures. Thanks.
Thanks Laurie, that's helpful. So again, I'm not hearing any specific, sorry Mike?
I always understood that the process was strategy and resources, assign an issue to a relevant policy committee, which will take the lead and then will determine how the working group comes together from other policy committees, surely is that not the process we use?
I think we've probably, I think that's probably evolved a little bit, I'm thinking about the burial strategy for example, which started off with the communities and then was kind of referred up to strategy and resources, and has had a cross-party and cross-committee group working on it, so I think some of this has evolved as we've gone on according to what works most effectively, and perhaps that's what we're trying to address to some extent with this, is thinking about more effectively how we bring those cross-committee pieces of work together. Go on Mike?
Well surely the whole role of strategy and resources is to assign cross-cutting issues to a policy committee, for them to take forward and put together the relevant people to discuss it and bring it back to strategy and resources, that's the process, surely.
It doesn't necessarily come back to strategy and resources, they can ask one policy committee to take the lead and take the decision. I think what this is, is then, in those circumstances, how do they better, how does it work with the other policy committees that it's within their remit, to get to that position where ultimately he takes a decision based upon input from all policy committees that have it within their remit?
Julie, sorry Mike, did you want to come back again there?
No, I just think we're trying to complicate this rather than the straightforward process of that.
Julie?
So I'm just left wondering, how does proposal 15 sit with proposal 13?
My own view is just because something is cross-cutting does not mean it's a tier one strategy, but, and that's what I think proposal 13 is more specifically about, the tier ones overarching strategies, but just because something features more than one committee doesn't mean it's genuinely cross-council, it might be across two committees, I think is my view there.
So then it will be a tier two strategy if it isn't, and then where does that make it further?
I think the tiering is not about how many committees are involved, it's really about at what level of strategy it is about, if it's something that's completely overarching, and by the time we get to tier three, we're talking about service plans and delivery plans and so on. So that's not just, that's, the tiering is not just about how many committees are involved or which committees are involved.
It's just about complicating things further, thank you.
Elle? Okay, again, I'm not hearing a specific amendment on 15, so we'll take that one, it's been now, sorry Mike, are you proposing an amendment there?
Can we reference to what the process is within the constitution, in terms of strategy resources assigning a policy committee to lead on a cross-cutting issue as part of that?
So you want to amend this so that S and R basically decides how cross-cutting issues are dealt with?
Assigns a relevant cross-cutting issue to take the lead, so the relevant policy committee to take the lead on a cross-cutting issue and either report back or make the decision.
Okay, is that wording specific enough David?
Yeah, I think councillor Leary, if I'm right, so what you're saying is that this is a, what you want to do is link this proposal to that circumstance, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything that's cross-cutting, it's S and R to decide who takes the lead.
Yes.
And once they've decided who takes the lead, they either assign them to make the decision and engage the relevant other policy committees in making that decision, or it's referred back to them for the final decision, the process is really quite simple.
Elle?
Thanks, I'm not familiar with what it says in the constitution, but taking what councillor Leary said at face value, I think this isn't about decision-making, this is about saying, if you have been given that responsibility, recognising that the thing you're going to consider relates to a whole bunch of other committees, it might be principally your committee's responsibility, but it does impact on X, Y or Z, what's the good practice way of engaging with councillors, officers etcetera on those other committees to make sure that we're not doing things in silos and that we're getting enough input from other people to make it? I don't think it's trying to meddle with the who's ultimately got the decision-making, it's more to come to councillor Goycott's point, it's the how, it's like what happens to make that a good decision-making process, that's how I read it anyway.
Mike?
Yeah, and to help with that, the law means to form a task and finish group, then co-op people from the other policy committees onto it to make that decision, report back to that policy committee, that's the process.
Any comment on that David?
That's a possibility, and that is one of the things that they can do, yes. And I think this is about getting that clarity of that's an option that you've got, that you've got the cross. Yeah.
Okay, so we've got a specific amendment there that we'll come to in a little while. Are we okay to move on to 16? So 16 is, again, this, I think Sue will probably want to comment on this one again, this is about review which committee has responsibility for matters relating to car parking and blue badges, so it is clearer which committee has responsibility. Basically, it currently sits between Wasting Street Scene and Transport, Regeneration and Climate.
I mean, I think this just needs a decision, but obviously it's got to be a decision that will work, and I know that each of the committees have discussed it, and I think it just needs half a dozen people in a room to decide what we're doing. I think the previous one, so what I was just going to say, I think the previous, the reason that regeneration got picked out for this discussion is that regeneration is specifically in the title of one of the committees, but it does actually impact on a lot of other committees, so. But in terms of the parking one, I mean, my own view is that Wasting Street Scene has more capacity to deal with it than TRC, but it would take the, there may be reasons why it can't move to that, but I think that's just, should just be a quick decision.
I think that should be picked up as part of the overall remit review to look at that and look at where overall the level of decisions are being taken at each committee. Parking, parking's often part of a transport, wider transport scheme, and therefore you, it's sometimes not possible just to separate out parking policy from a wider transport scheme, and would you put a wider transport scheme into Wasting Street Scene with the consequences of the, of that, taking that away from the other committee? So I, I understand what's being said about the joiner between them and how we need to look at that, and I think we will look at that as part of the overall remit review, but I think it needs to be done as part of the overall remit review.
Paul?
Thanks, yeah, I agree with that. It's my opinion that parking should be in transport, but I know, I acknowledge it is the really bloated committee, which is why I, in my opinion, I believe that the regen element should be moved to EDS, and the climate element should be moved to community parks and leisure, and the transport committee should be a dedicated committee just for transport issues, and that would then include parking issues.
Okay, but again, I'm not hearing specific amendments on this one, so that's too, we'll move on to the next one. So Proposal 17 is to consider the name of the Wasting Street Scene Policy Committee to reflect its link to regulatory functions such as regulatory licensing policy, and I'm assuming we're going to have a similar amendment here as on the EDS one. Thank you, Sue?
Yeah, I'd just like to propose that we say, add an amendment, say this committee proposes that the name be changed to the Street Scene and Regulation Committee, Policy Committee.
Elle?
Thanks, and I feel like I'm nitpicking here, but one of the conversations that I do recall the working group had was the idea that street scene isn't a thing that means anything to people in the public, and I note that the only reasoning given in this recommendation is to reflect its link to regulatory functions, to support that, that's a good idea, but one of the other reasons for changing the name of it is because street scene isn't a real thing that real people use when they talk about the world that we live in. I don't want to sort of oppose this on a matter of principle, but if we are going to change the name of it, it would be good if we could replace that bit of it as well, and I wonder if we could go back to the committee chairs and see if they have any better ideas, because it feels like it's a missed opportunity to make it say something that makes sense.
Julie?
Street scene is the highway, because it goes from a boundary to a boundary, so could we not just go with highways unless Sue's got a better suggestion, she may have had a conversation with the chair of the policy committee, I don't know, but that would be a reasonable alternative I would suggest.
Sue?
Can I suggest then that we have a couple of options, and we either discuss them informally and just put one option forward to full council, or we put two options to full council on the grounds of highways and regulation committee or street scene, whichever. I just don't feel it needs to go round and round in circles, it's relatively simple.
Just a second, I think, I think people are supportive of the proposal. If there's an agreement by the AGM, then we'll just put it to the AGM as to what the name will be.
That's fine, thank you. So we'll call that an amendment, but to come up with a specific name basically, it's a amendment I think, isn't it, as an option? Anything else on that one? No. Number 18 is to consider whether community buildings could be included in the remit of the Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee to include clarification on what we mean by community buildings as opposed to buildings which are part of the council's wider estate and operations. Rob, you've just come from a community buildings review meeting, I believe, so.
Indeed, yeah, that does make an awful lot of sense, a lot of what we discussed isn't just around buildings but around green space, so to roll them all into a single policy committee makes an awful lot of sense in my opinion.
Do we want to make a similar amendment then to make this one a recommendation rather than a consideration? It'll still have to be, oh, go on Dave.
I think it does say we need to consider what we define as community buildings and what element of community buildings' delivery sits within CPL as opposed to property issues which sit with, so, which sit with finance and performance, so I think, I think there's an element here which should sit within CPL, but I think we need to think carefully about it, and I think in time for the AGM isn't, isn't the time for that.
Okay, so I think, yeah, I understand that, there needs some clear definitions. Paul, did you have your hands up there?
Yeah, thanks, I, I, actually, I probably don't need to say anything, I think I agree with that in short, it's just that some community buildings are in the housing revenue accounts, some are in parks, some are in education, some are in health, I think, you know, they're all over the place, and part of the work that Rob and I are involved in is also defining what they are, isn't it? So I think that there is merit to this part, but I, I agree with the, for once, with the word to consider in this proposal.
Thank you, okay, not seeing any more hands up on that one, we are getting through these, so no amendments on that one. Number 19 then is to further consider the effectiveness of the relationship between regulatory committees, by which I mean planning and licensing, and the relevant policy committees. I know I had quite a bit of feedback around this from members of licensing committee, I think Sue, you've had some from planning committee in particular as well, so I think there probably is definitely some more work to do on this, but did you want to come in on that?
Very briefly, I think it's just about maybe formalising the way that the members of the regulatory committee feed into decisions made in the policy committee, so I think it is a piece of work that would be useful to do.
Thank you. Any more comments on that? No, so again, I've got no amendments on that one specifically then, so then the final one, and this is quite a big one, so, is to request officers to develop detailed proposals for a new scheme of delegation, subject to further engagement with members and officers, that will be the subject of further reports to governance committee in 2025 and 2026, and looking to implement those in May 2026 at the AGM then, so I lost David just to add a bit of detail on that.
So one of the things that struck me from the feedback was where some members referred to taking decisions as rubber stamping, and I think one of the reflections is, is that in line with the recommendation in here of what the purpose of the policy committees are, that aligns with the general matters that are reserved to policy committees, and I think that that is correct and correctly reflects all the things we've, this committee has discussed and the working group discussed about, what the purpose of policy committees are. What there are also reserved to policy committees are specific decisions around contracting, grants etcetera, but I think we can review to see whether the level at which they are taken within a policy committee remains the right level, and whether they should remain there, or whether the level at which they go to a policy committee should be changed. So that's not, that's necessarily around sometimes financial values, and the financial values haven't changed since I think about 2011, and there was a reflection that some of these were levels at which they were taken by an individual cabinet member rather than collectively by cabinet, and they went into policy committees. So I think what would be useful is to do a review of those reservations of those types of decisions, and look at whether they should remain at policy committee, and if so, at what level they should be reserved to policy committees. And that's a piece of work that I think we can do to then, if we do that right, what that will do is hopefully free up some capacity from the policy committees, and that might resolve some of the other issues that we've got around remits. What we'd also do is a backward look over the past few years and say, if, if we'd got these different level of delegations in, in the past, which of these decisions wouldn't have been taken by a committee which would have been taken by a policy committee which would have been taken elsewhere, and that, to see what impact that will have on going forward a revised scheme of delegation. That could be officers, but it also could be lax, and it could be other regulatory committees, so that's not necessarily all these decisions going to officers, I think some probably will if we do a review and that's where we get to, but actually looking at where, where these decisions might be more appropriate other than at policy committees, to allow policy committees to concentrate on that work that they said it wants to do. So that would be a review that would be taken by this committee to then make a recommendation to full council. My intention is, is that hopefully that, that work will be reviewed within six months by this committee and sent to full council, and full council have approved it, so that we can then start to look at how we implement that from the next municipal year, so that it gives us time. it gives us time to plan out what, along with the remits work as well, because I think this is intertwined with that remit work. In fact, it is remit work because the level of, the level of decision-making is part of the remit of a policy committee. So I think what we need to do is give ourselves as committee members, as officers, and as a council, and time to get ready for this coming in, and do that work then to decide what is the work plan for the following year based upon new, a new set of, revised set of remits and a revised set of delegations. So that's the proposal, this is a piece of work that is picked up specifically by this committee to recommend to full council.
Thank you, David. Sue, and then Julie.
Thank you. My view on this is delegations should be reviewed anyway on a regular basis, we need to make sure they're appropriate, that they are not excessive, and that they're used where it is, sort of, makes sense without taking decisions that should be really made by members individually rather than all being delegated. So I'm absolutely in favour of there being a review. I do have some concern that we seem to have picked out a plan to look at delegations when all the other options don't seem to have a plan, we don't seem to have a plan for. So as part of this, there were options about more committee meetings, I know we're going to discuss these in a minute, subcommittees, et cetera, and improving, increasing delegations was one of those options. So yes, I'm in favour of there being a review, but I don't want to take it away from the context of this being part of a bigger look at and making sure that we're also looking at all those other aspects along with it, not treating it as a separate thing.
Now, I agree, and I hope that what I said was indicative of that, that it's, it's part and parcel of that wider piece of work that we are doing. It's, it's not a standalone piece, it needs to go together with all the other things that we are doing.
I'm just wondering if, to capture that, is it a new scheme of delegation which might include extra committee meetings or subcommittees? Would that capture?
I don't know whether it's necessarily about extra committee meetings or subcommittees, it's about looking at existing committees and the, as to whether some things might sit there, or whether they're with officers, so.
Can we finish the discussion before we begin discussing the options?
No, no, there's lots more people to come in, I'm just trying to put the, get the wording that we might use right in there, but anyway. Let me bring in Julie then.
Yeah, thank you. I absolutely agree with what everything Sue's just said, she's absolutely right, and thank you for the clarification, David, I think that is helpful. But I would like to see an amendment added after Governance Committee in 2526 to say, including delegations to LAX prior to amendments to the wider scheme of delegations being decided, because I do think it's important that we do actually pull out and mention that local area committees are going to be a part of that, so I would like to see some, some reference to that in the proposal, please.
Thanks, let me just check the wording there, so after 2526, including delegations to LAX prior to the wider scheme of delegations, that's what you said?
I think if we get those right, then we'll look at how we get the wider scheme right from that.
Thanks. Elle?
Thanks, and I think it's helpful, and you spoke a bit to this in your introduction, David, just to reflect that this part of this conversation does, as we were touching on at the beginning, relate to kind of capacity questions, recognising that when we moved from a cabinet member model, you had nine people who were each individually briefed and could readily talk to each other and make what might feel like rubber stamping decisions in a very well-informed way, aware of the context and the history of how these decisions had got to feel like they were rubber stamping, because there'd been a lot of due process that had led up to that, whereas now we're in a situation where nine different people are each feeling like they need to have that knowledge and capacity because they're being held individually accountable for, for those kinds of discussions and decisions, and that's partly why we end up with such large briefing packs, and we feel like we're being expected to know stuff that we can't reasonably know because we weren't in all of the other meetings or a part of all of the other briefings for the last 18 months when this might have been discussed in various different policy committees or, or other forums. So I think, I think it's really helpful and should contribute to some of the challenges that we're facing around capacity in particular, as well as a sort of sense of purpose and responsibility. I'm keen to ensure that this scheme of delegation isn't just about the financial things that you were mentioning, David, and I think a piece of this is about the kind of cross-cutting thresholds, if you like, most of which are financial, but I think there's a piece of this which is for each of the committees to think for themselves about when it feels like I'm rubber stamping something, what are the assumptions that have made that feel like a rubber stamp? And if it, if I can articulate those to officers and say, if it's in line with the strategy, if it's already been to another committee, if it's had a, you know, blah, 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 then it is approved, so that we don't have to have papers and papers and papers and papers and papers of things to demonstrate that to us, then those committees can give that political steer in a way that feels pertinent to that committee, and I only sit on one in addition to this, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speak for what works in each of those contexts, but certainly, councillor Leary and I sit through finance committee meetings where we're, you know, ticking things off, and we could probably come up with a list of things that would be, you know, that would, would make it through without us having to have looked at them in, in great detail, thus giving us capacity to look at the more contentious things in a lot more scrutiny and be able to kind of have a real conversation about that. So I, I sort of, I don't know if I need to make an amendment to make that point, but I think there's something about maybe the engagement with members through committees to articulate what this looks like in each committee, and as a, just to kind of lay the groundwork now, I would hope that that includes how those delegations are reported back also, because I think it's important, particularly for kind of public accountability, that we're able to say these decisions have been made under delegation, and to report that back at the next available opportunity.
Do you think we can manage without a formal amendment there to make that happen?
Yeah, I think, I think so, I think it's, I think you're right, councillor Doherty, what we're doing is we're reflecting on members setting the strategy which is in there, but also ensuring that performance against delivery against that strategy. So I think that between that, that you could have delegations down to get on with delivering against the strategy, where members are setting the strategy and checking that performance against strategy. And I think, yeah, and I agree about the officer delegation, officer delegations in particular, they are currently published, but I think there's something about ensuring that greater socialising of that publication of those officer decisions, especially if there's likely to be more.
Thank you. Paul?
Thanks. So I would say that if anything, this report is an example of bad delegation, whereby now rewriting all of the proposals live in a committee, which, you know, is a very open and transparent process. And also, these options, they're not options of like, oh, we'll have one widget, or two widgets, or three widgets, they're all different prospects completely, and as it says at the beginning, it could be a blend or suite of ways forward. And actually, as, as, as we've gone through this meeting, what I'm seeing in this document, these 24 proposals, as is more of a to-do list for the continuing work of the working group that was together before this, or as Mike said earlier, perhaps it would be a task and finish group, somebody with better knowledge of the constitution could advise me on that. I would actually support the first four options, obviously the fifth option is do nothing, I wouldn't support that, but I would also say that this is the place, this is our opportunity to put in a review of the responsibilities of remits. I would add, I would replace option five with to review the responsibilities and remits of each policy committee considering minor and major changes, and I would, I would accept all, all five of those options, inverted commas then. And I think when we do go to the AGM and to discuss the mechanisms for the many reviews and considers in, in these proposals, that I, that I will be arguing that we do essentially refer this work back to that working group or a group in, in similar stature to it, whatever it would be called, to then go through and work with officers on all of the reviews and considerations that are set out in this report.
Thanks, Paul, I think that does reflect actually the discussion that we had in the working group, which would, that it would be a combination of all those options that we'd want to, that we'd want to use, including, I think probably the delegations is the one that requires the most working through, it's fairly easy to schedule an extra meeting of a committee, or to establish a subcommittee, or, you know, some of the other options, but the delegation work is, is fairly complex in, in terms of determining thresholds, as we've discussed as well, so I think that's why this particular one, but I think Sue made the point earlier around that we'd want to consider the other options as well, such as more committee meetings, subcommittees, et cetera.
Yeah, well, exactly that, Fran, because, you know, for example, option one, more committee meetings, doesn't say if it's one more committee meeting or 100, you know what I mean? You can't make an option on something without enough detail. These are all thoughts to consider as a unit, not as the proposal is in the formal document, which is just to request officers to develop detailed proposals for a new scheme of delegation. Yeah?
Yes, I think, and I think that point's been made, and I think absolutely, you know, what we are doing here, we'll be referring back to the working group to continue this work, which, including some of the specifics that we're laying out with these proposals, so I'm not quite clear if you're proposing an amendment or not, because we're not looking at the options here, we're looking at the proposals, you can add a further proposal if you like, or amend the existing proposal, but it's this, this list of 20 I just want to be clear on. I'm just going to text Sue, who's had her hand up for a bit, because that, in case that clarifies, so, thanks.
Thanks, yeah. I, I support Julie's suggestion about specifically mentioning the inclusion of delegation to LAX, I think that is good. I think the end of this proposal, because it does appear to just pick one of the options out for special treatment, if you like, should include some comment or sentence to say this work to be carried out alongside the work on the, on the committee remits, or the work on other options for committee remits, because it, it isn't a standalone piece of work, as far as I see, it's a piece of work that then feeds in, that we then look at in relation to all the others.
Thank you. Paul, does that capture enough the point you were trying to make there?
Well, I, I do agree with what Julie said, but in my version of the world, we would be adopting all four options, and option four is delegation to the local area committees, so, you know, another way of getting to the same place, I think.
I think we've got two proposed amendments there that capture all four options between them, so that feels as if we've got there, I think.
In which case can I propose an addition, or either an addition or a replacement of option five, which says, to review the responsibilities and remits of each policy committee considering minor and major changes?
David?
I think, I get the point there, I think people think that the remits has been lost. I think that was intended to be part and parcel of the, the recommendations of how we go forward, which is agree the proposals of how we go are set out in section two, and so I think that is set out, that remits are looked at in there, so I think that's intended to be part and parcel of that. I get, I get that the members aren't seeing that and it's not as clear, so I think possibly putting the clarity there rather than putting it as a distinct other option, because those are, those options in a way are ways of looking at the, of maybe implementing the recommendations. So I think one of the recommendations is, is that we are looking at the remits.
Okay, I'm going to take Elle, and then we'll come back to you.
Hope this is helpful. I think what councillor Turpin is suggesting, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a recommendation 21, new recommendation, that we should look at the remits in the wording that you suggested as an amendment to this paper that captures the intention that you're describing, that we continue to look at the remits in the future. Would that be a good way of articulating it? I'm going to finish my point and then you can come back. I think the issue with thinking about this through the frame of the options, so far as I can see it, is that option one isn't something that we can agree to, we would just be creating randomly more committee meetings that have no work plan or purpose or time schedule or anything, we'd just be saying, yay, more meetings, which I think councillor Turpin would agree would be a bad thing, due to the increased capacity and, and like challenges that that would create for councillors. So I read option one as saying, where more committee meetings might be useful, let's encourage committees to think about that as a way of addressing challenges that they face. Ditto for option two, that we can as a council at any point create more subcommittees if we want to, councillor Leary was just talking to the fact that they're generally created on an annual basis. If that felt like it was an appropriate solution to a particular challenge we were facing, this paper seems to be saying that's an option. I don't think at this point we should say, let's create more subcommittees, because what are they for? We haven't worked that out yet, so that isn't, doesn't feel like an option we can subscribe to at this point, doesn't make any sense. Sounds like the option three, we're trying to articulate what that might be through the work that David's just outlined, and there's a suggestion that we add some of the option four into that as well, and option five is do nothing. So to me, the proposals that we've got make sense, apart from the, the issue that you're raising, that there isn't the kind of remit point in there.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks. So that is the point I was making, that it's not in there, and I'm not very fussy where it goes in there, but I just want a commitment that that's worked on, because it isn't in this document, it isn't in the recommendations, it isn't in the proposals, and I'm concerned that it's been left aside intentionally so as not to work on it. So I do want it in there specifically. I think that we ought to be reviewing all of those things, and I'm not saying that we should say every policy committee must have so many more meetings or so many more subcommittees, I'm saying that that's part of the discussion that we need, we need to have, we need to continue to have and to come to a conclusion. I think, has TRC had something like an extra three or four committee meetings this year? You know, it's, and then we've got EDS that's had 40-minute, 30, 40-minute committee meetings, you know, so it's, I, the thing is, is that the recommendation in the table only accepts a new scheme of delegation, which is why councillor Grokot is saying that we need to consider the LAX. I agree we need to consider the LAX, but I also think we need to consider how constitutionally the numbers of meetings and subcommittees are set, and they're actually, they all need to be looked at and reviewed.
So I think, I think we've got the two amendments to proposal 20, but then I think, would you be happy if we took the suggestion that this is proposal 21, to review the responsibilities and remits of each policy committee using the wording that you said? So did you want to come in there, David?
I think the options aren't in there as options to be considered today for putting forward, I think the options are in there as they are options of things that might be used to deliver when we're looking at the other ones. I think that was the intention of putting them in, as opposed to options that we are considering today and voting on.
Sue, did you want to come in there?
Yeah.
Does it, does it cover it if we, sorry, Mike?
I have a feeling of deja vu here, going back about four or five years, when we debated subcommittees, task and finish groups, and working groups, and the decision was made, working groups is a nebulous thing, it doesn't mean anything. Task and finish groups brings clarity because it says, what are you going to do, how are you going to go about doing it, and what timescale are you going to report back on the task you've been given to do? Subcommittees, and TRC is a classic, should have a subcommittee, it cannot possibly do everything it's got to do within a committee framework. That's why subcommittees were put in place, so that annually they could be reviewed as to their purpose, and whether they were meeting their objectives, and whether they should continue. So the process was that, and task and finish groups within the committees. So the process was that, and task and finish groups within the committees. Now, we've now created working groups, which is utterly meaningless in my view, because we have a framework which clearly defines how the committee system is supposed to work. So let's make it work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'm not sure that actually added to. Can I just go back to just being clear, what amendments we are putting in here? I think we've got two amendments to proposal 20 and a proposal for a proposal 21, which is what you just said, Paul, is that? Okay. Right, given, I'm not seeing more hands now, what I'm going to suggest is, it is, go on.
Sorry Chair, I do appreciate we're going for the German and I can't wait to get wigs, it's rather hot and sticky here, isn't it? But I did want to just suggest another small textual amendment to the report, which is admittedly not on the table of proposals, but on page 14 of the report, part 2.5.34. I'm sorry if you've got the full agenda paper, it's.
2.5.
3.4, which rolls over onto the top of page 14. Which has the sentence, the final sentence of that part, however moving policy thematic responsibilities around the existing policy committees is unlikely to address the issues we are experiencing, I'd just like that sentence deleting.
You can't do amendments to delete sentences in a report, the report is there, is published. I think we've taken note of that, objection to that sentence, and it's recorded in the minutes.
Okay. Right, given where we are, I think we'll take the German, but I am conscious that we are getting towards four o'clock, so first of all, I would like to request the committees' permission to extend the meeting, so we say till half past four. We do have to be out of here by five o'clock, because S and R are meeting in here, so I hope we can get that done, but is everyone happy to extend the meeting? Yep. So I'll propose that we just take, as long as we need, but hopefully not more than 10 minutes, that we, the groups look at their responses to those amendments, and that we perhaps have a little confleb of the group leads just on deadlines as well. Okay. For taking that bit of time, we are quite restricted for time here, because there are other committees coming into this room, so I'm going to take us through the proposals. We are just going to vote on the amendments that were put forward, no discussion, I think we've had the discussion prior, that was the point of that. And then once we've got the final set of proposals, we can go through the recommendations, which also deal with the proposals as a block, if you like. So I think the first amendment was proposed by Julie on number, proposal number one, and that was the, I won't read it out because I haven't written it down, but that was about the how of how we do this. Within the purpose of the committees, so can I see those in favour of that amendment? I see four in favour, five, and those against? Okay, so five, four, that one is passed. Do, shall, if I've missed any of them as well. I think the next one was at number three, which was about Mike's point about including hyperlinks with the executive summary. Can I see all those in favour of that one? That's unanimous, thank you. Then I think we had two proposed amendments to number five. The first is that we change the word review to increase, so that it reads that we increase the extent to which committee papers and committee meetings are made acceptable to citizens. Can I see those in favour of that one? And yeah, that's everybody, thank you. And the second one there was in the second sentence, that this might include the length, adding in the word length ordering and format of reports. I see those in favour of that one? Thank you. Again, that one's unanimous. Then on number six, it's proposed to take out the sentence at the end there, it is also suggested that committee chairs might introduce reports at committee meetings to provide context. Can I see those in favour of that deletion? One, two, three, four, five, and those against? That amendment is passed, so that is deleted. I think the next one then goes down to proposal 14. Where we added in the specific recommendation that, to council that the committee be called Economic Development Skills and Culture. Can I see those in favour of that one? Everyone, thank you. Question, question 15, proposal 15, sorry Mike, I'm still a little bit unclear on this one, were you just referring to what is already in the constitution? Does that really need to be an amendment if it's already in the constitution? We want to confirm the existing constitutional as part of that, okay. Again, we're happy with that, David, yeah. Can I see those then in favour of that one? All agree? I think the next one was around Wasteland Street scene, but given that we haven't actually come up with a definitive title, I think probably the proposal is all right as it is, to consider it, but we know that we'll come up with something specific ahead of, ahead of full council, I think is the key bit there, so that this one does actually go to full council, isn't it? Are we happy to just leave that as it is? Pardon? Yes, sorry, that's what I meant, yeah. Paul, sorry, did you have another point there? Are we happy just to leave that as it is without amendment then? Yeah. Then I think we're at proposal 20, so again, there's, I think there's two proposals here, the first of which is Julie's proposal to include delegations to LAX prior to the wider scheme of delegation. Yeah. Can I see people who are in favour of that one?
Can I start with clarification first, please, Chair? So that is an amendment to option three. Option three, oh, yes, proposal 20, option three, yeah? Are we not on the options bit there? Options for addressing demanding capacity pressures on the system, there's five options for proposal 20, I believe, isn't there?
The actual proposal is for officers to develop a detailed proposal for a new scheme of delegation, so I think.
Yeah, but not in the.
Sorry Chair, just to clarify, the options aren't particularly in relation to proposal 20, the options are in relation to all the proposals, so they are options of how those proposals might be delivered. The options aren't there to be included or excluded, they're a narrative of how the 20 proposals might be delivered.
Does that clear that up for you? Paul?
The text for proposal 20 on the table, page 28, is, reflects the text for option three of the report, but it, and so I understand that councillor Grokot wanted to add in something about option four, which is about delegating to the LAX, and that's fine, but why have we got option one and two? And if they're not in there, and option three is?
I think we need to take the proposal as it stands, as opposed to imagining that it's referring to specific options. So yes, I think this proposal does cover something else that's in the paper, but, and I think Julie's proposal was that delegations to LAX must be considered before we look at that wider scheme. I have to say, I'm a little concerned about how that will impact timelines of this work, given other pieces of work, but, go on.
I suppose what I'm getting at is, we need to make sure that we've got those right with the likes, before we finalise what we're doing with the wider scheme of delegation. So we can do it all in parallel, but we need to make sure that we're not complicating one with the other. So if we've got those right, then we know what we've got left to finish off with the rest of the scheme of delegation. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, I'm wondering, and I don't want to take away from the discussion that we've had, whether it's easier to leave this one as is for now and come back to it as we're reviewing the scheme. I'm just worried that we're going to put in a form of words that could be confusing, but I'll take people's advice on that. Paul?
I think if you're worried about putting in a set of words that are confusing, it's too late, Fran. Like, we've literally, on a report, we've got a section that says that with five options, these.
Paul, sorry, can we just quickly get to the bottom?
I know, I'm just saying, this is absolutely ridiculous to have options where there's no, which are not, which has no option to vote on, it's just utterly ridiculous. Like, I am happy to move on, to be honest, but it is just very, very bad, and for a governance committee, it is very, very bad governance. I'll just, I'll just drop that. And I will support councillor Grokot's amendment.
I was going to suggest that we just take the other amendment that I think Sue put forward, which is work carried out, the work to be carried out alongside the other options for committee remits, which kind of captures all that work, so if we just take that one, then I think that does capture both, does that feel fair?
No, I'd like my amendment to stand, please.
Okay then, can we vote on Julie's amendment, which is about including?
Sorry, my understanding of what David outlined in terms of what a scheme of delegation is, is that it's about where we're delegating things from councillors to officers, and I'm just concerned here, when we talk about LAX, are we talking about lack officers? Like, what, how does that relate to the scheme of delegation that's relevant to proposal 20? I'm not sure.
The delegations are set out in the constitution, and there are a number of delegations, so all the delegations come from full council, some are from full council to policy committees, some are full council to officers. So when I say we're reviewing that, it can include a recommendation to full council that some of the things in policy committees may go elsewhere, including to LAX. So it's part and parcel of the review, so it's, we're not limiting it to just consider whether they should be delegated to officers, we're considering whether, what should be delegated from policy committees elsewhere. So that could include with or without the amendment to LAX. And other regulatory and other committees that we've already got.
Okay, we're clear what we're voting on there then? So let's vote on Julie's amendment, which was to include delegations to LAX prior to the wider scheme of delegations. Can I see those in favour of that one? And against? That one is also carried. And then the amendment that Sue put forward, which is the work to be carried out alongside other options for committee remits. I see those in favour of that one. And no one against, thank you. And then the final one was to add the proposal to, for the working group to review the responsibilities and remits of each policy committee and consider minor and major changes. Can I see those in favour of that one? Anyone against? No. Okay. Thank you. I think now we've got clarity on what proposals that we have, I will take us to the recommendations. We'll go through these one by one, just to keep it clear. So the recommendations are to consider the findings for the review of committee remits and the proposals of the member working group, I think we have just done that, so can we agree that recommendation? Yes, thank you. To agree the statement of purpose as detailed in paragraph 2.5.2 of the report. Which, I think that takes us back to proposal one as well, doesn't it? So again, are we happy with that recommendation? Yep. To, I think these are possibly a bit the wrong way around, so let's do four first, to consider the options and proposals to address capacity and resource for policy committees. I think we've done that to some extent, but agreed that we need to do more work on that, so again, can we agree that recommendation? Happy with that. Number three then, is to agree the proposals as amended, to improve the way we work as set out in section two of the report, and to request a general council to progress to various actions as outlined. All in favour of that one? And finally, to recommend to council that general council is requested to develop proposals for a scheme of delegation in line with the proposals outlined in this report as amended, and which will be subject to further engagement with members and officers, and further reports to governance committee in 2025, 26 for implementation from May 2026. We're all supporting that recommendation. Thank you, that was a very long discussion, but I think we needed to go through it in that level of detail. Paul?
Thank you. Can you just state just for clarity for any public who are still putting themselves through this meeting, about the plan, which isn't in, literally in the recommendations, that just the working group will continue to address and review and consider all of the proposals we've just passed?
Yes, so I think we had a bit of a discussion in that interval there, and I think we can pick this up on the work planning anyway, that we'd like to continue, basically to bringing all those proposals back regularly to committees, so that we can continue to see the progress on that, and that the working group continues to meet. We don't need to do anything in particular to, to set that up, but to progress the other actions that we have agreed out of those proposals. So we will continue to do that, and when we get on to the work planning item, there's some specific sort of dates suggested in there, for some specific actions as well. Is that okay? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move us on then to item eight, which is feeling fairly urgent, urgent decision making. David?
Thank you Chair, if members don't mind, I won't go down to the front, just because everybody's there and I'm conscious of the time. So this is a report that makes a recommendation to governance committee to ask full council to look again at how we deal with urgent decisions. Urgent decisions are those that can't wait for the next policy committee meeting, and which have arisen since the previous policy committee meeting. There are actually currently three ways that those may be dealt with. One is to add it to an agenda, if the agenda, if there is already a meeting called, and the agenda has been published but doesn't have that item on it, that allows for it to be added to the agenda for the relevant policy committee. This proposal doesn't change that, and that will continue to be an option. The other one is about when an urgency subcommittee or either an extraordinary meeting is called to deal with that urgent decision, if there's time, because those meetings have to be called on five working days. That's what this proposal is about. The third option is for officers to take urgent decisions, that only applies if the other two do not apply and cannot be implemented. And again, this proposal doesn't intend to change that. So at the moment, the constitution requires each policy committee to create its own urgency subcommittee, that is made up of five members of the parent committee. As I've already said, the urgency subcommittee and an extraordinary meeting of that committee, both need to be called on five clear days' notice. So despite its name, there is no ability for an urgency subcommittee to be called sooner than an extraordinary meeting. The table in the report sets out how often we've used urgency subcommittees, and you'll see that actually, we haven't used them at all over the last municipal year. Indeed, we've only had one urgent decision taken, and that was at the Wasteland Street scene, currently named, and that was in relation to the AMI contract, and that was dealt with by an extraordinary meeting. So the proposal is to abolish the requirement within the constitution for each policy committee to create an urgency subcommittee, and to rely upon the ability to call an extraordinary meeting to deal with urgent matters. That has the benefit that all members of that committee will be called to attend. That has the benefit that all members of that committee will be called to attend for that meeting rather than five, which is the limit of an urgency subcommittee. It also has the advantage that each annual general meeting, we don't need to call the meeting of each policy committee to create its subcommittee and appoint to it, saving a lot of time and I think a lot of confusion, not only for members of the public, but also for everybody at the annual general meeting. Sorry, I whizzed through that because I'm conscious of time and we've still got the work programme, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you David, and I appreciate the speed there. I know we have discussed this ahead of the meeting and it does reflect really an existing situation, that something we thought would be necessary under this system has proved not really to be necessary at all. So have we got any comments or questions for David? I'm seeing shakes. So in that case, I will move to the recommendations, which are to note the update provided on the use of urgent provisions and to agree to recommend to council changes to how urgent businesses manage in the committee system. Is everyone in support of those recommendations? Thank you very much. I will take us on then speedily on to item nine, which is work programme. Alice, do you want to speed us through this one?
Thanks Chair. There's two recommendations in it and it's really part of this is a look, look back at what, what the committee's done. And that's set out in appendix one. And then for you to commend this as a tool for future committee work planning in the new municipal year and that you recommend that in line actually with the conversations, discussions, the proposal in an earlier report, that you have a dedicated work plan session, which is in the diaries of those who are on the current committee in the forthcoming municipal year. So appendix one is the, the table that you also circulated an addendum today, where if you look at the yellow boxing, we've tried to pick up all the proposals and, and give them a bit of a timeline, but also acknowledge that these proposals from the policy committee remits review need to be part of the work programme for the governance committee next year and very much on the table for that work planning meeting. So I hope it picks up, all, all that needs to be picked up from the, the discussion earlier around the review of policy committee remits. There's one that I want to add in and that's actually that very first proposal around statement of purpose. And that is, I think it would be good to include a review of how we actually do that, how you, we, the organisation, meet what's in that statement of purpose and actually perhaps a bit of a perform, a review back on how we've, how well we've, we've done as an organisation and is the more that can be done. And I think that will weave into some of the conversations and discussions that have been around some of these individual proposals. So it's just saying, right, we've taken all the proposals, put them into a work plan. And I think the point at which you really pick up on is a working group needed, which is what's been mentioned, possible timelines, confirm those, what you really want by when will be the topic of conversation for that work planning meeting, if that makes sense, Chair and Committee.
I think it does. I appreciate we've come to end of time. I mean, for me, there's a couple of things still missing from here, one of which is the review of public questions, which doesn't seem to have made it on. And just on those additional items, I think we just need to amend where you've added them in at the end there for number seventeen about Wasteland Street scene. We need to make the date May twenty twenty five because we've just agreed that we will recommend that to full council. Sue?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought the review of the questions was in, so I don't know where that's gone, but it must go in back in.
It is, sorry Chair, if I might, it's probably got crossed over on two pages. It's got the orange heading on it. Underneath it, you've got charity sub and then you've also still got review of public questions.
It does, I think.
So those are leftovers from this year that still don't have a date against them.
I did want to make an additional proposal Chair, as I indicated in our pre-meeting, and that is to add to this work programme a review of the scheme of delegations for planning applications. I'm not sure if that's the formal terminology, but our group are very keen that we look at it because we're aware that we're out of line in terms of how we delegate compared with a lot of other councils. So I would like that to be added as an item of work for this committee.
Thanks. And I think again, as we were discussing the proposals there, we did talk about the links between planning and licensing and committees. What I'm going to suggest is rather than add it here to the work plan, that we make sure that's included in a away day when we have our work planning away day so that we can properly work through where to put it and whether it fits with another piece of work, for example around licensing, and can come up with an appropriate date for it so rather than try and rush a decision here on when we need to schedule it for. Thank you.
Sorry, I, I think it's actually quite separate because it's not a policy committee scheme of delegation. I'm not after a date for it today, but I would like it to be recorded that we would like it on the work programme. I, I fully accept you can't put a date on it for today.
And I think that's fine, but we'll pick it up on that work planning day where we can go into it on some more detail to be clear exactly what we're talking about. Okay. Okay. Bearing those amendments in mind then, any more comments on the work programme? The recommendations are that the committee notes the work programme and look back as set out in appendix one, and that the committee commend this as a tool for committee work planning in twenty twenty five, twenty six, and recommend a dedicated work plan session for the new committee in the forthcoming municipal year. Can we agree that recommendation? Thank you very much. And that does conclude our meeting. I'd like to thank everybody for staying longer today. As you know, we will be approving this schedule of meetings at the council AGM in May, so the date of the next meeting and time will be approved then. Thank you everybody.